Good. And prayer. And Stephanie, would you name us some prayers?
I'd like to.
To the prayer of the highest states of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. End of this law with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you leave some prayer, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful time that you allowed us to come together as a quorum. And as a city, God, as citizens and people of the valley, Lord, we thank you for everything you're doing here. God, we ask that you will place your hand upon the valley and that your grace will be with us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anita, roll call, please.
Counselor Lorenz.
Yep.
Counselor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
And counselor Howard is dismissed this evening.
Yeah, Quorum.
Quorum's declared.
Thank you. Any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting from March seventh, twenty twenty four, and review and approval of accounts payable. And move to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting from March seventh, twenty twenty four, and view and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Proclamations, communications, and appointments. That BJ, appoint. Appointment of BJ Bonggardner as alternate for to the Board of Adjustments?
Yes, BJ Bong. So we have three Board of Adjustment members, and by the current way the code is written, they all serve on plan as zoning commission. And we have all three currently serving, but BJ would be an alternate. We're allowed two alternates in case for some reason, and that's important because we only are allowed so many days once they turn application to actually get in front of the commission for the board, and if we don't do it for that time, then we have some issues as far as what we're doing. So, and with only three and them all being volunteers, sometimes it's hard to get everybody on the same schedule. So.
And move to appoint EJ Bonggardner as alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to appoint BJ Bonggardner as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint EJ Bonggardner to as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Amendment of Gary Wilkinson to the URA.
Gary's been a member of the URA for a very long time. He's been the school board representative. He turned him out of the school board, but still wishes to serve. So this appointment would change him from being the school board representative to being a mayoral appointment by Mayor Becker.
You mean a council appointment or?
It's his appointment that's approved by you guys.
Oh, yeah.
So that's how that works. But I guess it'd be a council. I'm not sure how to say that.
So I can make.
Yeah, I mean, that's him. He can just say what he wants. If it's our rest of us, then we gotta make a motion.
I didn't appoint, but the council has to approve.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gary Wilkinson to the URA.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to appoint Gary Wilkinson to the URA Board. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint Gary Wilkinson to the URA.
Appointment of John Myers to the URA Board.
He's a new person to town. He has been around for a little while. He is a insurance agent. He has some experience in construction and in contracting, as well as working in some urban renewal and some planning and zoning kind of stuff, and he's interested in serving the community. So far, he's had pretty good input. He's only been to one meeting, but we have talked outside of that a few times about kind of what his experience level is. So Mayor Becker thought he would be a good addition, as well as Gary Wilkinson. So he turned in a letter of intent, and the planning and zoning board reviewed it and believed that he'd be a good fit.
And move to appoint John Myers to the URA.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint John Myers to the URA Board. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint John Myers to the URA.
So some comments. Okay, we've scheduled appearances. We have none of those either. Uh, recognizance, none. Resolution, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero eight budget amendment for twenty twenty four budget. Make her talk a lot. She said this was your last talk.
Um, I wanted to get, uh, mayor and council members, I wanted to get this budget amendment in, um, before I was gone. Made, uh, adjustments mainly to account for the big increase in our health insurance. Um, and other minor adjustments. Um, we were able to decrease the capital outlay for the general fund, um, because the boilers that rob and divide didn't cost as much, so that, um, helped save. That was mainly the the, um, decrease of the seventy nine thousand in the general fund revenue and expense side. So anyway, um, and, and this budget amendment will also include uh, reallocation of the fund balance for the one cent sales tax fund, so it can be included in the budget for spending this year. So I'll just read it. Whereas the City Council of the City of Montevista has conducted a public hearing to review the proposed twenty twenty four budget in accordance with the Home Rule Charter and approved the twenty twenty four budget on November sixteen, twenty twenty three. And whereas the City of Montevista has made provisions therein for revenues in an amount equal to or greater than the total proposed expenditures as set forth in said budget. And whereas it is not only required by law in the City of Montevista Home Rule Charter, but also if necessary amend the revenues and expenditures provided in the budget and for the purpose described below as not to impair the operation of the city. And now therefore be resolved by the City Councils of the City of Montevista, amend the appropriation of funds. The following sums are hereby appropriated for the following funds. Um, the general fund, uh, the adopted budget was five million twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-seven, and we want to reduce it to four million nine hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-one. Um, also that includes the reduction in the property tax that we didn't receive until after we approved the twenty twenty four budget. It was only like ten thousand less, but this includes that. And then also. Um, I'm not changing the conservation trust or the urban renewal or the airport grant, um, kids connection. I'm increasing the revenue by three thousand two hundred and six. Um, the water fund and sewer fund are not changed. The capital improvement fund. I am, um, amending the sales tax revenue to be consistent with what we budgeted in this, um, general fund. So that's an increase of ten thousand dollars in the capital improvement fund and also in the one cent tail, sales tax fund. That's those, the, the sales taxes split one percent each for general capital improvement and one cent. So they should all be consistent. So then, um, the expenditures for the general fund, um, will be reduced by the same amount that the revenue is reduced by the seventy-nine thousand and eighteen. Um, the conservation trust, I am increasing the expenditures by seven thousand four hundred and thirty-six. That's because we, um, budgeted for the sales tax revenue to be more consistent with what we were really receiving. But I did not increase the transfer that I do from the conservation trust to the general fund to cover parks and maintenance. So I am increasing the transfer amount from forty-five thousand to fifty-two thousand per year. Or this year, I mean. Um, did not change urban renewal or airport grant, um, increased kids connection expenditure by the same amount that I increased the revenue, three thousand two hundred and seven. Increase the water fund, um, from one million six hundred sixty-three to one hundred and fifty-eight to one million six hundred sixty-nine and six hundred and twenty-one. Um, and these, these two for the water and sewer, um, is to account for mainly the increase in the health insurance, because what I had budgeted was like seven percent, and it actually went up by about eleven percent. So then increases the sewer fund exchanges, expenditures by eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven. Um, and then the one cent sales tax fund is going to be an increase of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-nine. But that is, um, mainly just to account for the reallocation of the fund balance, so they can spend it there. So that leaves, um, year-end estimated cash reserve and the general fund of two dollars. Which is positive, more than zero. Conservation Trust Fund, um, will have, uh, uh, year-end cash reserve of, of about a hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, Kids Connection, two hundred and eighty-two. Uh, the Water Fund will still have a deficit, um, and the deficit will increase to eighty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-four. The Sewer Fund deficit will increase to three hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and forty-nine. And the Capital Improvement Fund will decrease because of the sales tax revenue, um, to three hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine. The one cent sales tax fund will have a, a deficit budget of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-nine. Um, that is the exact amount of the ending fund balance in December, less the additional amounts we put in for reserves to hold in reserve. Severability of any part, section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this resolution is for any reason held to be invalid, such in validity shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. Effective date, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its approval by the City Council. Do you have any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. It looks funny saying we've got these deficits. The year end of our, of our budget, we actually do have sixty-five thousand in sales tax towards the general fund.
And, and excess.
In excess.
That was eighty, sixty, I don't know. That'll be next on the list.
Okay, I'm gonna get there. Okay, all right, thank you.
But yeah, I, because I didn't talk much about the, um, ending balance in the general, just mainly that the one cent, but I wanted to explain why that deficit was there in the increase. Anyway.
So you can't leave until we pass this? Is that what you're saying? Budget amendment, resolution twenty twenty-four oh eight.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two zero two four dash zero eight, resolution amendment sums of money for twenty twenty four budget. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight budget amendment for twenty twenty four budget.
Contracts. And agreements and leases. Twenty twenty-three state Homeland Security Program Grant submitted in January twenty twenty-three, awarded in March. Late on, it's kind of strangely.
Um, so last January, I wrote a grant February, which we got it. They finally sent us a funding letter, uh, on February twenty-seventh, which I think I received in early March, actually. Um, so they finally funded the grants to pay for a portion of the security fencing at Sky High. During the process of the application, we selected a, um, three different companies. We got bids, and Your Great Outdoors was the winning bid as far as cost, um, and capabilities. And during the intervening time, prices have changed. We also changed the scope of work slightly. Uh, we're gonna have them remove the old pipe fence, um, where they're gonna put the new fence. Or as originally, we were gonna have our, our street crews do it, and due to some other time constraints, we just don't have the capacity right now to have them remove that fence. So Your Great Outdoors added that to the cost as well. Um, so the prices went up about twenty thousand dollars since when it was approved. Um, after discussion with Stephanie and Anita, the funds exist inside the Capital Improvement Fund for Sky High out of the one cent to make up the difference that we need. Um, so without your permission to spend the grant money of the twenty-five thousand and seven dollars by seven, I don't know. It's just what they gave me, and, and purchase the fence. This will provide the, uh, wrought iron fence on the front, and then a section of some chain link on the back to basically provide us with about two hundred and seventy degrees of fencing solid at this point. It would fence in the entire west and south end of the Sky High complex. So we still have a little bit of exposure on the east side, um, that can be, um, closed off. We just need to repair one of the gates there. So this would complete the enclosure for, uh, Sky High or large events. Um, so the, uh, current bill is eighty-nine thousand eight, or eighty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars with a down payment of forty-four thousand and some change. Um, if I get your approval, you can start next week, and it will be done in approximately two and a half to three weeks, depending on um, some weather aspects. You can't control how cold it gets and pouring concrete and doing that kind of stuff. Questions?
Make a motion to approve the, maybe by twenty thousand and some odd dollars to the original bid to get the fencing.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Homeland Security Program Grant submitted and approval of funding needed. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
We got it.
Motion carries to approve the Homeland Security Program Grant for twenty-five thousand seven dollars. An award that grant to Your Greater Outdoors for the security fencing at Sky High.
Yeah. Received and approved financial reports. You send the financials. Anita? Get your ass to this morning.
Well, I was on my ear. I don't know which one to say. Mayor, councilmen, members, I, um, included in your packet the year-end, um, financial report for December of twenty twenty-three. I just want to point out it's un-audited. Um, and there may be more adjustments, depending on what happens with the audit this year. Um, they have started. She thinks that they might come for a couple of days next week. So it should be, I think she's shooting for the end of April. Um, we finished December um, with a cash balance in the general fund of two million eight hundred and fifty thousand. The water fund had a cash balance of three hundred and ninety-two thousand. And the sewer fund had a cash balance of eight hundred and forty-three thousand. All three funds, um, ended with revenue in, in excess of expenditures. The general fund had eighty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two. The water fund, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-two. The sewer fund, six hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and sixty-five. The expenditures percent of the approved budgeted amounts, general fund was ninety-eight percent. Water, sixty-two percent, and sewer, forty-three percent. Um, the house receivable comparative for, um, general water and sewer fund, the general fund increased eighty-eight thousand. And that was related to the correction of the court receivable records, um, sales and franchise tax receivables, reimbursement requests, um, that we were waiting on from the PD Workforce Retention Grant, IHOP Grant, and Airport Cares Grant. We were able to book, um, a lot of grant revenue this year. Water fund, um, decreased related mainly to the receivable for utility billings. And the sewer fund increased related to the reimbursement request from the wastewater system improvement grant. Even accounts payable, um, A, AP, um, general fund increased by about fifty-one thousand. And that was related to annual software renewals, um, PD vehicle repair. She burns things up.
That's kind of wild.
Parting, parting shot right there.
There you go. I always have to give them a hard time about all these cars and. Um, and we had an increase in wages payable, which was booked at the end of the year for what was paid in January. Um, the water fund decreased about eleven thousand, mainly related to the buyout of the bank towers that we paid out for the sick and vacation accruals from two thousand and three. We were able to get that taken care of out of both the water and the sewer fund. So the sewer fund decreased about ninety-three thousand, um, and because of the bank hours and also because we had to accrue um, the, the penalty that we paid to CDPHE in twenty twenty-three, we had to accrue it in twenty twenty-two, so it took it, um, out of the books and decreased it. The revenues comparative, um, the general fund increased overall by about eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars compared to, um, twenty twenty-two. Tax revenue was up by about two hundred and fifty-one thousand. And then, um, we had increase in federal and state grants. We had an increase in sports fees. Um, interest on, um, earnings on investments increased of, a lot last year. Um, rec donations, police donations, um, rants, just by about a total of six hundred and ninety-three, all of those combined. The water fund overall increase of about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, that was related to the use, um, of the ARPA funds that we helped cover the purchase of the generators and also the Dennis Street Project. Um, interest was increased, um, and, um, we received water rights lease revenue that we hadn't counted on, so that increased it over the previous year. Sewer fund increased by about four hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Um, state grant funds, he had a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, had an increase in service charges of three hundred and forty-nine thousand and, and interest, um, miscellaneous was none. The general property tax revenue comparing the three years, um, pretty much follows the same pattern. There was a slight increase in May, slight decrease in June, but then, um, it leveled out in August. Throughout the rest of the year, a little bit of an increase in November. The Rio Grande County sales tax revenue, um, for the most part was increased in twenty twenty-three, um. And then, you know, in September, it all met at the same point, and then it decreased a bit in October. Um, but it still is above what, what it was the prior two years. The sales tax revenue, um, it kind of jumps all over the place. It's not as consistent as property and county tax. Um, it leveled off in April and May, and increased in June and July. Um, decreased in September and increased in October through the end of the year. Total tax revenue, which includes all of the sales balance, um, property, specific ownership, um, shows an increase throughout the year, um, still above the previous two years, October through the year end. Expenditures, we have our expenditures, um, in the general fund were, um, uh, higher this year. Um, a lot of the expenses were expected, unexpected expenses. Um, we, the rec department has, um, upgraded their sports equipment. They have, um, contracting officials and games and uniforms. Um, but then a lot of their expenses were offset by lower grants and donations. Um, we spent more for Sky High in, um, planning assessment expenses, but some seventy-five percent, seventy-nine percent of that was reimbursed, um, but then we were able to increase staff out there, so that increased expenses. Um, other unexpected, we repaired the library damage, um, we had building improvements on our beautiful city hall now. And we had expenses for the land use code revision and boundary surveys.
So if you recall, you all have, um, agreed that we could take the money out of the reserve to do the exterior. And we were able to absorb it within the budget itself without pulling that money from the reserve. So that's plus.
If you remember, we had budgeted a deficit of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand or so, and we still ended up with an excess of eighty-eight thousand. So we didn't, um, go in the deficit alone. Um, general fund revenues comparison.
You can do it.
The, um, increase in December for revenue was because Sky High. I told you, I just cannot do it. The expenses were related to the payment, the extra payment also for Sky High, um, in December. So when you look at both the revenue and the expense, um, comparison, you can see, um, the two months in September and December is when we received the money from Carla from the outcult and the re-trust, and we made the expense payments at the same time. You can go to the budget one. Um, yeah. We, like, I was talking before, and Gigi, we did really well not going in the deficit, um, to cover everything that we did. We still finished the year under budget by two percent in the general fund, um. Any questions? Wait. Um, we finished, uh, December with a current ratio of three point five eight to one, and we still have six point seven four months, um, of operating expenses in the unassigned fund balance in the general. Now, do you have any questions? My first thing will improve the reporting of that December financials.
Seconded.
They moved in second to approve the December financial financials. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Uh.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to to approve the December financials.
And then also in your pocket was the annual report that we put together for the one cent sales tax fund. Um, the committee met in March and reviewed the financials on the year end, December. Um, and went over. The um fund balance and the reserve held in reserve and. Um, the allocation of the fund balance, so I was able to present that to you in the. Budget amendment, and then we put together this um annual report that um. And and did I ever say this, it was in your pocket? Um, we started the year of twenty twenty-three with a fund balance of one million thirty thousand. And we collected another seven hundred and twenty-two thousand in sales tax revenue. So, um, they set aside reserve and they allocated the remainder to the respective programs. Um, police department was able to upgrade and expand the officers' uniforms and gym equipment for just two more vehicles. Um, enclosed the PD parking area. Public Works was able to set um assist property owners. With sidewalk replacement and began work on the Denison Patterson Street project. Sky High was able to further equip the complex with additional supplies, signage, a skip spur. Um, industrial, big fans.
What's the name of that?
What was the bank on those?
Um, and the initial gym flooring was sold and replaced with more practical and durable material. Um, now funds in the three programs were expended and so it created an ending fund balance and we have reserves in the one cent. Of one million ninety-six thousand and that is what we carried over into twenty twenty-four to reallocate for spending. And then on the back just has a little summary of each program, police, public works, Sky High. With the graphs that show the uh the comparison for the three years. This might need to be aware of that annual report. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. I'll go to staff proposals, reports and actions, recreation, Durban's up. Nice to see you.
Thanks, good evening everyone. So for recreation, um it's our busy season right now, we are having a um. I'm sorry, on March thirtieth, we're gonna have continued education for a hundred safety class. If you remember, they had a beginning hundred safety class at the end of December, so they're gonna have a continuation on March thirtieth. Uh, recruiting with men's and women's basketball, which is a full-time job for anyone in that. Um, I also wanted to mention that last month, um. Uh, Councilor Lorenz, you had, we talked about Zumba classes, that I would have to teach a Zumba class. If the mayor made a free throw and had to open up the courts, I was nowhere near teaching class. He had hit the backboard, I was leading teach class. I had to throw that.
We'll do something next.
Um, our youth soccer kicks off uh on April sixth. We're lucky to get a host every Saturday, and we will be hosting it over here at Chapman Park, all the teams um that are in our con- in our league. Which would be a lot of fun, uh we'll be setting up goals, we did get a donation of twelve, eleven thousand dollars from um. Lower Foundation to buy branding nets, so we have branding nets uh for every age group. So that'll be a lot of fun, um yoga classes begin. Um, their second session on April third, run through May first, every Wednesday at ten AM. And like I said, um, I didn't have to teach a Zumba class, but Zumba class is starting up again and going on every Tuesday.
Double or nothing, yoga hands or nothing.
I will, I will set the courts up just for you. But he did pick out a young man though, a little pit crater, who came in and just switched it on for a shot, so I give him credit for that.
It's all on video too.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, if anybody missed that, it's all.
And if you didn't see it, his wife passed it on.
Can I get that on YouTube, is that where that's at or?
Can you find that?
It's on Facebook, it's on the city's Facebook.
Oh nice. Can you send me one of them? I had nothing to do with that part. Um, we will be having a concealed carry class out of Sky High, um it's going to be April fourteenth. From eleven AM to two thirty PM, um seventy-five dollars, and we're gonna set up signup classes here. Or set up for signup here pretty quickly, now open registration. That's all, I have recreation, any questions? Did you say the, they're gonna be hosting soccer every Saturday here? Mm-hmm. So last year, they would. Go around. So it's all. We agreed to since we got the nets and everything, we bought the nets, that we would just hope to hear Chapman and everyone, all the. Directors and whatnot agreed to it, helps to hear Chapman with the nets and not have to. Transfer nets or carry nets around and that, so. Nice. Thanks.
So the young man that I picked and he squished it. His dad was one of the big project managers of Sky High Park.
Oh, okay.
Kyle Cooper's son.
Nice. Any questions? Thank you.
We'll find something else.
Thank you.
You're going in the dump tank the next time. You're going in the dump tank the next time.
Oh, by the way, that dump tank, we didn't talk about that coming up.
I like you still waterlogged from the last time.
Kids connection. Did you really just stick your bubble gum on the seat?
Good evening. I don't have much for you, um kids connections after school enrollment is still sitting at about sixty-five every day after school. Um, we just officially made it through spring break, this was the longest week ever. Um, I don't know if any of you caught the announcements last week, but we've had staff out sick, like we're all just taking turns. We closed the day last week, hoping everyone could get over it and we would make it through this week, while I clearly didn't make it through a whole week. So, spend the next, this weekend. Hopefully recovering and not catching something again, because this has been absolutely enough, and it's just cycling through everybody. Um, so we started out on Monday with about twenty-five kids, we finished out today with forty-two. Um, we did have a field trip scheduled with DJ Sol there, we were supposed to go out to Sky High and do the walk um on. Uh, Monday morning, but it didn't work out, cause. Staff coming into the building sick, I can't have anyone going out of the building when I don't have in the building. Um, so I'm working on getting those rescheduled with him. Um, and then next Friday, our kindergarten through second grade group was invited out to Monovista Estates for an Easter egg hunt. So we're gonna go out there next Friday afternoon and hang out with the residents and. Um, hunt for some eggs and. The lady that called me was like, how many kids do you have? And I told her how many, she was like, that's a lot of kids. So we agreed the kindergarten through second grade group would be more manageable for her. Um, and then I received an award letter for um a grant that we wrote for Alpomar and the amount of ten thousand dollars this week, so. We're chipping away at revenue for the twenty twenty-fourth um year. That's really all we got for you. Have any questions?
Thank you, being in a building full of little ones, you keep that just.
I've never gone, I'm so sick, this year is, I'm going on three in like the last month.
You said twenty twenty-four is gonna be crazy.
Oh yeah, that's just blood and petri dishes running around now, their immune system's tank.
We closed down and we didn't have kids on Thursday, and we deep cleaned the facility from top to bottom, we spent ten hours cleaning a facility. And I came back on Monday and I was okay Monday, but then yesterday something hit me and then today it was even worse, so. I'm just glad it's not Friday.
But thank you, Anita. Sky.
Good evening, Council. Been a while since I've been here. Uh, we'll start you off with some numbers, um in January, we ended the month with seventy events. Um, that is our new record for number of events in one month. I really hope we don't ever break that number, cause that was a really long. Um, February, we capped off with fifty-nine events, March, we're looking at about forty-five events, and April, we have fifty-five scheduled right now. Um, so far in twenty twenty-four, we have three hundred and thirty-one events booked. Which terrifies me a little bit, since we ended last year with around four seventy, um. And we're not even halfway through the year yet, so. We're just picking up more and more, um, we haven't really seen that much of a. Um, effect with the price range. Um, we've had a few birthday parties and baby showers that have decided not to with the increase, but other than that, I think everybody else is still. Okay with our price increases.
That's positive to hear, what what's the impact, um since we're also adding a cleaning fee?
Most of them don't mind it. A couple of our events that have come up have had previous events with us, have made comments about it, um but when we explained why we added it. They don't have an issue.
Right?
Yeah.
And then for the meetings, we're offering a water service for every meeting.
If they choose.
Yeah. Good job.
Um, some of our larger events that we've already had this year, um ad conference was absolutely amazing. Um, we pretty much doubled our numbers every single day, um we went from about five hundred and fifty. Guests between the vendor show and the educational piece to about eleven hundred, um. CSU reported that they had about two hundred and sixty more educational registrants than they did last year, so that is just phenomenal. And they're almost capped up, they're they're at their max for what my building can house. So hopefully they don't get any bigger, but we can just maintain and continue to have that that great of an attendance. Um, Crane Festival was a little bit less attended this year than it was last year, um. We had about six thousand people over the three days, um but they had a huge increase in the number of vendors. Um, they actually maxed out what our event center can host, um so we had three hundred or a hundred and thirty-seven vendors. With about forty vendors that were on their waiting list, um so that one has definitely grown in size. And will continue to grow, I think, from what they've been doing. Um, with our. Big ass fans, um, we started installation on them this week, um so those should be up and running before we know it. And I'm really excited to see what kind of a difference that makes in the temperature difference there, so. Hopefully we can um. Not have as hot of of things for the summer, um and our quinceañeras weddings and stampede can. Be a little bit more bearable. Yes, and we have six of them, so we'll we'll see how that goes, hopefully we don't blow people right out the door, but. Um, and a few of you heard Gigi talking a little bit earlier tonight, um I will be attending a academy for safety and security this next week. Um, Chief was supposed to attend with me, but things changed, and so um Detective Zeke Sisneros will be going with us. Um, it is a two-year program. Um, but when we leave, we will have a full um complete uh operations manual for Sky High. They will sit down with us and go over every single detail, so that we walk out of there with. Security, safety, standard operating procedures, everything ready to go. So I'm really excited. And that's all I have, question?
So, one question.
Yeah.
That soundboard flag that was on the west wall?
Yes.
Is that?
It wasn't a soundboard, um it was something that Coors donated, um and when we had the outdoor signage installed. By um Extreme Graphics, they asked if they could donate a new one. And then they got swamped and haven't gotten us to. So I did touch base with him during ad conference again and just said, hey, if you're. Not in a place to donate that any longer, just let us know, we'll put our old one back up, cause we still have it. Um, and he said he's still very much interested and he'll try and get back to us before stampede. Alright, thank you.
You step. Lanny, Mr. Andrew Lee.
Thanks for approving the appointments and the contract, uh. It's kind of nice, like I know I'm up here a lot recently. But we're starting to see some really cool stuff moving along, but we've been years in the work as far as, since I got hired, uh so. We also retained or obtained the. Contract for Sustainable Forest Initiative, which is SFI is going to be our. We're gonna be a sub awardee from the Forest Service. Through them to us, so the million dollar tree grant is gonna come through SFI. Um, it's taken way longer than they anticipated to get all of the things and funding mechanisms done. And so they've also asked me to rewrite the narrative and budget and all the parts that go into the grant. To accommodate into a four-year cycle, so I'm in the middle of rewriting that. Um, so we'll still get the full million dollar, we didn't see a reduction. Um, but now we have to spend it inside four years as opposed to inside five years. Uh, and then it also means that we'll go from a hundred and twenty-five trees a year to a hundred and sixty-six trees. So it it'll increase the workload, um so we're gonna kind of revamp how we're gonna, not doing it. Probably a little more contract work as opposed to um more kind of work. So we're working through that, uh Rob and I both are, uh. The. We'll finish the RFP process for the surveying of that as soon as we get the actual grant agreement, which will have to come to you now. Um, when we could accept the grant, it wasn't a big deal, but now that it's gonna be a contract that's set by. Uh, you guys have to approve the contract for a million dollars, cause that's not inside my. Wheelhouse, uh, last week, we had CSU Landscape Architect Master's students. And uh the National Park Service Rivers Trails. Conservation and Access Program. Personnel came out, so they're gonna be producing for us the plan for some master trail line downtown access, uh looking at. Origin those alleyways that were getting redone through the uh Energy Mineral Impact Grant. So we're working through all of the various, wait, that was a different grant, it was Energy Mineral. It was, it was the alleyway grant.
That, yeah, that was through Dolus Energy and Mineral.
Okay, so that was that. But they're gonna help us like figure out ways to make all of those lively and pick them up and make them worthwhile. Um, also, they're going to help us with the visual aids for bearing the lariat ditch. Um, they'll provide us with some writing and pictures and ideas. Um, which we will then take toward granting agencies and. It's always better to show them something, cause I can say something all day long, if I can show you a picture, it makes a larger impact, so a lot of what they're gonna be doing is providing some of that drawing in in detail. So that came out last week, it really well, uh the mayor met with them, as well as Gigi spent about an hour chatting with them. The boundary adjustment for Sky High is complete, uh it's ready to be filed with the county, once it's recorded with the county, then Gene will redo the deed, so that all the paperwork matches and then that project. Or that portion of that project will be complete, as far as redoing all of the. Five parcels that we made into the three. Uh, today I signed the permit for the golf course, uh their new club, their new clubhouse, so they'll submit for a building permit. As soon as they complete the rest of the drawings. Planning and zoning continues to meet twice a month, still working on the land development code. It's been a really painful process to get as far as we are, but now we're starting to see some significant progress, we have two chapters of draft. Um, ready to kind of get tied into the rest, we should have another two by the end of this month. And then we'll have the remaining two probably within a week or two after that. We lost our consultant last week, um. The firm is still the same, but our consultant resigned from the company, um so that did set us back at least a week or so. But I did meet the new one, he's committed to trying to get us back on track to get those rough drafts done, so we can get that. Through planning and zoning, through public hearings. And then on to you guys for a work session and then a public hearing, and then a public meeting, so that we can actually pass it. Um, with that, we're gonna have a public meeting on April the twenty-fifth. Uh, that is for planning and zoning, and that's to cover STRs, short-term rentals, um and find out. From the public what they would like to see as far as management and control of those inside the land use code.
And STR stands for?
Short-term rental.
I said it. Didn't say it. Sometimes you talk. Sometimes you talk fast.
Uh, but we're gonna have that, uh, we're trying to learn from other cities and other counties. As everyone who can read a newspaper knows, almost had a super fun time when they tried to pass regulations for short-term rentals. Um, and we don't wanna have that kind of conflict. So we're trying to get in front of it while we still have a relatively low amount. And get public feedback on what we want to do, what they want, and then we'll craft the rules based on input from them. Uh, and then come to you guys with a plan that has at least been seen by the public and, and been given some guidance. Um, so that'll be on April the twenty fifth at our normal meeting. Um, and we have already had feedback from some citizens. I have one gentleman flying from Cincinnati who owns one. Will be coming just to attend that meeting. So hopefully we have some significant people or amount of people there. I'd really like to get good feedback. I don't like it when we make rules and people finally hear about it, like, well, I wish I knew. Put it in the paper, put it on Facebook, told it in person, I can't do it. Um, so hopefully we get good sense from that. Um. Megan finished the RFP for the design infrastructure for Sky High. For the additional bathrooms and RV spaces. Me and Rob will review that next week. Try to get it published quickly, so that we can begin that process, so that we can continue to expend those funds prior to the twenty twenty-six deadline. And that pretty much sums everything up until I come back up very little while. Any questions?
Thank you, Sky. City Attorney.
Well, it's been a real busy month during the last month. Um, I'll start out just with, uh, Munich Court. Yesterday, um. We had fifty-two cases on, uh, twenty-one of those with traffic, and that includes. Speeding, careless driving, no insurance, following too closely, defective vehicle on the roadway, unsafe backing, running stop signs. And then we had one littering, one assault, uh, four shoplifting, six trespass. Two possession of drugs paraphernalia, two thefts. One possession of marijuana by a minor, and one, uh, injury to property, one harassment and one dangerous dog. No, partnerships and a pair of three. So, uh, Monday mornings, we have, uh, set aside an office, uh, for the last month. And it's probably gonna continue into the foreseeable future. Uh, allocating to meeting with DJ on land use code, uh, and related topics, um. And, uh, we're getting toward the end of the definitions right now. Um, counting three hundred and twenty-eight definitions so far with the land use code. Uh, that's where we are as of three eighteen twenty-four. Uh. I met with, uh, Tim Shefchik, uh, from Cobblestone as Gigi had requested. On three eight of twenty-four at the library. It was a good meeting. Um, a lot of information, uh, from, uh, him about how Cobblestone works. Where they are with their investors, uh. Uh, our, um, incentives, uh, discussed, uh, some. Rephrasing may be necessary there to, uh, do the, uh, appropriation language. And I see that the county attorney had made the similar comments on that. Uh, and it looks like we've got, uh, a meeting probably coming up in another week or so. With, uh, Tim here, so, um, that was a good meeting though. I learned a lot, uh, from, uh. Just that conversation. I think it's a, a good outfit. Um. Cog, uh, export the regs, uh, we're gonna need to schedule a public hearing. Not less than thirty and no more than sixty days from the publication of notice on that. Uh, Cog has accepted our insert of language. On the relative responsibilities of Cog and its attorneys to changes and we. Give you a copy each of the insert that we were able to negotiate with. Jean. So, um. Rather than us being burdened with a lot of unnecessary work here. Um. The, uh, second, uh, sentence really. Uh, stepped out with our insert under the permit authority consultants, the permit authority may appoint. Or deputize any personnel attorney or consultants with joint planning board of the San Luis Valley Council of Governments. As authorized representatives of the permit authority to investigate and determine. The effect of an application upon the permit authority adjusts the amounts of the guarantee set forth in section one. Three oh two, pay fees to necessary consultants and administrative personnel orchestrate for the administration of. Underlying documents and procedures, schedule and conduct hearings pursuant to section. Three two ten and three two seventeen, request and pay for transcripts, draft and implement findings of fact. Represent and defend the permit authority in any appeals. And conduct any legal proceedings necessary to implement the purpose of these rules and regulations, the designation ordinance passed by the permit authority. Or the intergovernmental agreement executed by the permit authority in connection therewith, joint planning board. Or Cog will submit its designated permanent administrator. From the San Luis Valley Council of Governments to be appointed by the permit authority, permit authority being you. Uh, and, um, by initiating these responsibilities at the end of this sentence by authorized representatives of playing. Joint Planning Board or Cog, the Joint Planning Board or Cog accepts that responsibility if so requested by the permit authority. And, uh, the cost of all consultants are the responsibility of the applicant, not, uh, the municipality and not, uh. The, uh, not Cog, uh, as such. So hopefully the, uh. The, uh. Responsibilities of our staff will be pretty close to zero on this whole thing. Um, and, uh, this has taken about four or five months to get, get to this point, but, uh, sounds like we're there. So I thought I would mention that. Um. And, uh. So presently, um. DJ and myself, uh, are looking at a contract for purchase of sale. On, uh, some property in the vicinity of, uh, Big R. Um, and, uh. Getting to work on the contract, uh, got a lot of stuff to go through, a short amount of time on that, because I got. Like four and eighteen pages and stuff to look at, uh, with that, uh, but I think we're gonna be able to. Get a draft out, uh, in accordance with the time that, uh, he's requested sometime next week. Uh, on those two contracts, a couple of individuals there. Um. So that is, uh, what we've been doing. I would like to mention that, uh. Just a moment of remembrance, uh. Vic, uh, from the city cruise, who I stopped in my office the other day. And, um, Rose Wilson has passed away. I don't know how many of you remember Rose. I think some of you do. She served on the city council. Uh, she was a, a shining light for the city council. Back around the, uh, turn of the century and, uh, or, yeah, two thousand. See, not, not the turn of the century, uh, but, uh, some, uh, twenty, twenty-five years ago anyhow. And, uh. The, uh, uh, she, she was a pilot among other things, uh. And she was just a real bright shining light among this city council. Uh, I'm gonna miss her a lot, and I think to all of you who know her, likewise, miss her, so. Just a note of remembrance for her and, uh, Vic and Vicky and, uh, so. That's what I've been doing for the last month. Anybody's got any questions? Not? Thank you.
Jake, thank you, Jake. City Manager.
I didn't know Gene was gonna bring the ring this, uh, um, there was a little spat going on there a little bit. And I certainly thank Gene for all of his work, and he spent a lot of hours. Listening in on those meetings, um, along with me. Our water attorney did not think it was necessary, but sometimes more is better. So. We are, we will be adopting the, um, ten forty-one with. The recommended language that, that Gene has prepared. Uh, you know, as you know, we've had some staff changes. Uh, Shannon Griffin, you met earlier, she is our new human resource director. Judy Phillips will be training now with Anita for the next few weeks. And then, uh, will be taking over as the finance director. Andrew. Uh, the, uh.
Oh, that's well.
That's well, thank you. He has taken Lowell Bolt's position as supervisor over parks and streets. And then we've got, uh, accepted the resignation of Chief Dingfelder. His last day will be around April the twenty-sixth. And. And so I just wanna to thank George. He has, he'll be at the next meeting and we can do any accolades there. I wanted to see if you guys wanted to do any sort of a, a reception or public. Open house or something. I guess a lot of that hadn't necessarily been done in the past, but I think that he has been.
Be nice to listen to all.
Yeah, and he said he didn't want one. We had. You know, he has been so helpful even in the, the. Making sure that the, um, job description had a little bit more meat into it. Had that the next chief that we pick has some qualifications in it that maybe we hadn't looked at in the past. And he has offered to serve on the panel. By questions, he's just been really very, very helpful and wants to see it smooth transition and, um, and said, you know, he'd be here. We needed him for anything. It's still, he's still through it, so. You know, it always creates a little bit of nervousness in the back, but. You know, right now we've got a really strong police department and we will be, we will be fine. And we'll find the next right person and, and we will move on. The, um. I never go in order of my notes. I've just gotta kinda look at this. We, I did have a meeting with. The, um. The president of the council, if that's what you'd call him, uh, for sub-district six in the Rio Grande Water Conservation with Amber Pacheco. They asked to meet with, with me. To see what water conservation efforts the city has already been taken or taking into consideration. And so Jeff, uh, Williamson, her water attorney, and Jordan Demick. With our water engineer joined via Zoom and, and Rob. Was there with me as well, and we just had a really good discussion. And I'm proud to say that they are very impressed with a lot of the things the city already has in play. You know, the water meters for one, um, having us lease out excess water. Doing the, um. And we had a whole bunch of things. So they were really impressed and pleased and, you know, some of those things are just done quietly that. You don't normally just tally up. So that was a real positive public. Uh, discussion with them. Um, the. Bob Richards would like to have a work session to talk about the theater. His lease is up in June. Um, he and I had a long discussion today about it. And he's got everything well documented, numbers, dollars. The expenditures, his revenue, his, um. Number of people attending the theater and it's not pretty. So he'd like to have a work session, share that information with you. Primarily just to say, you know, city, you're gonna be taking it back and this is what you need to be aware of. And, you know, he obviously has some expenses that the city would not have had. You know, we wouldn't be paying ourselves for the water. Uh, we had been. Been working with, um, sharing the trash service with kids connections, since they're across from each other in the alleyway. He had to get his own trash service. Um, and, and, you know, he's paying labor. We weren't really paying labor before. And so it's not. You know, COVID created kind of this mess. Because people aren't going back to the movie theater. And the one thing, as I'm looking at the numbers, I said, so you're being supported by senior citizens. He said, yeah. He said the kids aren't coming back. And once, you know, with people being home from COVID, they learned how to downstream, um, download and mainstream.
Now you can get family and go on TV. You, you can watch those new movies at home.
Right, right. And so. It's just a real interesting dynamic is that the outcry of, oh, we've gotta save our theater. We're saving it for who? So. I'm trying to wrap my head around it, see what I can bring to you guys as alternatives as we think about. You know, it's a key location on our main commercial street. And how we look at this. So anyway, can you guys do Tuesday night? This next Tuesday for a work session? Okay, thank you.
What's the twenty-six?
Yeah. Jason, you nodded, yes, okay. Victory, yes, okay. So we will, I will let him know a little bit more.
Five thirty or six?
What do you guys want, five thirty or six?
I can do six.
Six.
Exactly, five thirty-six.
Okay, five thirty-six. All right, six PM, thank you.
Could be that specific.
The, the Board of County Commissioners would also like to set up a meeting. Uh, the dates that they selected are the dates I'm gonna be out with my husband's knee surgery. So I, I made the suggestion, what if we did a work session after our next, um, council meeting? So it'll be April the eighteenth. I thought that would work great. We'll try and keep the agenda short. And we'll meet with the county commissioners here in the chambers. They wanna talk about the hotel incentive, which. They are not going to be doing now. Uh, they wanna talk about the tourism board. The McMullen lease renewal and then the pavilion addition that they've got going on. Um, control of the noxious weeds. And I think the noxious weeds thing has been, is really interesting. And, um. From the basis that Rob and I've been working with them. And we've attended some of their weed board meetings and we've had, I've got good conversation. But their manager of the weeds. He doesn't play very nice. And so. Work, I'm kicking the sand back at him, and so now he's really, really grumpy. So our commissioners are gonna be the point of contact to work with the city, which I think is just fine. Um, Lowell Bolt went to work for him. That's gonna, I don't know, maybe that will help. But they put noxious weeds on the, the agenda. They wanna talk about affordable housing, and then this next year is the Rio Grande County's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, so the planning of that. So those are some, some of the things that they put on their list, and I haven't created my, our gen- agenda yet, so if you all have any suggestions, we can do that. Um, and then on something real positive, staff has been working on. You know, um, the city doesn't really do events. We we support events, and we've had some people come, well, this is being generated by John Glass, who's wants to sell his business, the Valley Monument Company, and so we've gotta get the Fay, the Fay Hinkley Veterans Memorial Park completed. And again, that really wasn't a city project. The city helped support those that were working on it. Um, it's kind of landed in our lap to see it through, and so we will be we're gonna be doing a fundraiser on July the twenty-seventh. It'll be a car show and poker run, as well as the events and carnival and stuff here in the park. And so we're working, still working out the details. We've got a few community folks involved. Um, some of the, the various military veterans groups have been really stepping up and saying, we'll help, and we'll, we wanna participate, so that's very positive. And, um, they, we picked that date because that's the traditional Stampede Saturday. And so since stampedes moved up two weeks, it's kind of left open that you know, nothing else in the valley, at least yet, has, has taken that Saturday, so I'm hoping that that can be a good event. And then um, I've reached out to two different foundations who are interested in giving larger chunk of change. I mean, just to go ahead and get the concrete around the rest of the park, which I guess original, the original design was to have it all in pavers. Concrete will be less expensive. Sixty-five thousand dollars. And then, uh, the, um, the flagstone that's already been purchased, that will be sandblasted with the names of those members of the Matil- Matil- Military that had been killed in action from the San Luis Valley. John Glass is taking care of that, that engraving, and then there were some bricks sold to people that wanted to put their family's name on it as far as loved ones for veterans, and so that's open to the San Luis Valley, anyone that has a a military member that they'd like to honor or memorialize, and so we'll be going back out with a fundraising effort to go ahead and see if we can't get some more of those plugged in. So you'll be seeing more, more, um. Public, um, public relations and outreach as far as that goes. I don't know, let's see. Anything else? You guys have any questions?
Hmm. Well, I'll tell you, I'm really glad that you and Chief have talked together to, to keep all this together, because I have a lot of respect for Chief and what he's done for our city, so I'm really glad he's willing to stay on to help us out.
Me too. You know, he's just such a fine gentleman, and, um, we've gotten a few, at least on paper, really good-looking applications. Um, there was a former chief of police from Alamosa, who's now the city manager in Greenwood Village, who sold us a snowplow at an extremely reasonable price, and, um, and so I reached out to him, and he's helping, you know. We need some subsidings, subsidy questions and stuff for this go-around, and so we make sure that, that we're tackling the right issues that, um, are pertinent for Montavista, and find that right personality, and so he said, absolutely, and he says, I know George, I love George, we're great friends, and said, oh, I'll help you, and so the people are rallying, rallying around, you know, we've got so many good things going on, and we wanna see us continue to do more good things. And I wanna give a shout out to Anita. She did a great job, her last official presentation. Thanks, Anita, for everything you've done for us, you know, too.
Thank you, Judy. Council Committee, City Commission, and Council Report. Mr. Lorenz.
I'm good.
Victor?
I, I also wanna just thank Anita for everything that she's done for this. Um, I I know a lot of people who are passionate about a lot of things, you know, and, and, uh, it's not something that you know, people can speak about anything, and when it comes to something they're passionate about, they get choked up. You know? And, and I, I'm just amazed, you know what I mean, and I appreciate your commitment to the city and you know, to your job specifically, because I know that you have passion for that, you know, because it, it shows, you know, and just thank you.
Very well said. Just gonna give it up that easy?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You signed something.
Don't even look at me.
You were gonna speak at this meeting.
Did I?
Yeah, I had it on paper somewhere.
That's a poor grief paper I saw once.
Well, I back up Victor and Judy for Anita. She's done a great job. Appreciate it. Um, one of the things I'm gonna say is people in the community, so hopefully there's a lot watching, um, and if you see something, say something. I was out barbecuing, and a lot of suspicious activity was going on. So I kinda got nosy about it, and it we, we, it put a stop to some of the stuff that was going on in my neighborhood that I didn't even know about, but I caught it. Um. Don't be afraid to say something. Just call it. If it's not an emergency, call the non-emergency phone number, and just start giving them information. Because it'll keep your neighborhood safer. I'd like to get the, uh, Kathy was in charge, what was it, uh? Neighborhood watch, neighborhood watch. I'd like to see neighborhood watch start again, because it kind of built up that momentum, the thing for early on, and with the new chief pop, coming on, and something we need to do is community support our police department. And there was a comment made the other day about something, and alls I could say was Monty Strong. So Monty Strong. All right. Um, executive session. I could.
You guys can all go. Thank you. I'll be here thirty thousand. This is an executive session, so we can't have you in here.
He, he gets to stay in until you go actually into executive session.
Oh. I mean, we have the recording in progress. Will you go into executive session, and then I'll stop the recording?
Yeah, do now.
Yeah, yes, we go into executive session before I start.
Be safe, Stephanie.
Make a motion, dude. Go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four B. In discussions of purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real or other property interest under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four A.
Second.
Been moved in segments, go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions in CRS section two twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. Discussion for purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, real estate or other property interest with, under CRS section twen- twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B, four A. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Lorenz.
All right.
Counselor Watson.
All right.
Mayor Protem Segola.
All right.
Mayor Becker.
All right.
Motion carries to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B, and discussion on the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real or other property or interest under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four A.